Good evening.
Marvin?
Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the Lee County zoning board of appeals Thursday, November 4th, 2021 meeting. First order of business is to call the roll. I'll start with Bruce Forrester here, Craig Burrow, not here, Gene Bothy,
Here.
Glenn Hughes,
Here.
Mike Pratt,
Here.
And Rex Meyer, not here. The meeting has not been adjourned due to the ongoing petition, so there are no minutes to approve tonight. So we'll start out with the first petition as new business. And that is in the matter of the petition of Matthew P. Lindstrom, 1886 Wildcat Road, Dixon, Illinois, 61021. Petition is to rezone and the petitioner, Matthew P. Lindstrom, states as follows, the petitioner owns the approximately 2.33 acre tract legally described as Exhibit A attached here to and made a part here of. This property has a permanent real estate index of 16-01-36-226-034 and addressed as 1886 Wildcat Road, Dixon, Illinois. This property is located along and immediately south of Wildcat Road, approximately 408 feet east of Pelmyra Road in Pelmyra Township in unincorporated Lee County, Illinois, and is within one and one-half miles of the corporate city limits. The property is presently zoned as R2 Single Family Residential District and the petitioner is desiring Lee County Board to amend its zoning ordinance to rezone the subject property to Ag 1 Agricultural District dated this 20th day of September, 2021. First, I would like to have Dee give us a summary.
Notification of this petition was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners. Notice was posted at the property and displayed on the Lee County website. Legal notice of this petition was published in the Dixon newspaper on October 12th, 2021. According to the Illinois state statutes, any township that has a planning commission must be notified of a rezoning within their township. The Pelmyra Township Board was notified of this petition and met on October 12th, heard testimony and unanimously voted to quote, "No objection on the petition to rezon," unquote. In addition to other notification requirements, the City of Dixon, whose boundaries are within one and one-half mile of the property proposed, was notified and on October 18th, the Dixon City Council voted without objection on the petition to rezon. The petitioner is proposing to have his R2 residentially zoned parcel of 2.33 acres to be rezoned to an Ag 1 agricultural zone for the purpose of raising animals. In 2017, the petitioner purchased the home, two small outbuildings and a barn at 1886 Wildcat Road, unaware of how the property was zoned. Prior to moving in, the neighbor to the south of the property was raising goats and the owner of the property directly across Wildcat Road raised cattle and turkeys. The petitioner had purchased three goats this year, unfamiliar with the county's regulations, that raising farm animals is not allowed in an R2 Single Family Residential Zone. Wanting to keep the animals and be in compliance with the zoning regulations, the petitioner is requesting an Ag 1 agricultural zoning to allow the raising of farm animals. The Lee County Comprehensive Plan indicates that the land use in the area where the petitioner is requesting a map amendment is rural residential to agricultural.
Petitioner present, you want to please step forward so I can swear you in? And you can be over here at this microphone, either one.
That's fine.
Raise your right hand.
My name is Matthew P. Lindstrom. Purchased property at 1886 Wildcat Road four years ago, four years prior to that. I took care of maintaining the property for the Gridley family. When the property became available for purchase, immediately jumped at the opportunity, drawn to the property by the outbuildings, the lack of neighbors and livestock next door and across the road. Having always been around ag and animals, this was an ideal place to raise my kids, around the things I enjoyed when I was younger. I'm a member of the Farm Bureau and was also a member of FFA. Growing up in May 2021, I installed fencing in the northwest corner of the property and purchased three small painting goats. Had no idea of the zoning and never thought anything of it, kind of considered these pets. Never really thought of them as raising livestock. And with the horses across the road and the cows right next door, intent of the purchase, I wanted to teach my kids to learn about responsibility and develop a strong work ethic, similar to how I was raised. Also by doing this, my kids were interested in joining 4H. Through this, they will learn teamwork, leadership and a sense of self-worth. Goats are ideal because of their size and do not require a great deal of time, money or space like cattle or horses. As for the future of the property, I can assure there will be no more animals, no hog confinement, so cattle or horses. I only have two acres and that's not ideal for those kind of animals. Can also assure the area where the goats are will be well kept, never becoming eyesore. That's about all I have to say.
Any questions from the board? You intend to stay there, I assume, for a long time?
Yes, for a long time.
Assuming the orientation is, the property above you is north, what's the distance? I mean, where's your, where's your fencing? Have you got the extended fencing or are you keeping it fairly close to your property? And then what's the use of the property directly to the north?
Everything shaded in a yellow is R2 Single Family Residential. Everything clear is agricultural.
That's what I was assuming. Just wanted to get some reference to the property, the property or properties north of that.
So all them homes on the, beyond the west side of Wildcat, that row of homes are all Ag 1?
Are all Ag 1, correct.
Does it lot size?
I have no idea.
Have to be at least an acre. Because you have to have at least an acre in Lee County to be able to have a well on the subject.
They appear to be.
It could be more than that, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, they appear to be in that range.
And if you look at this property as two acres and look at those across the road, they're a little bit smaller.
The other question? Any questions from the audience? Probably my only concern is just the properties immediately to the, the property immediately to the north and the interaction there, because that is our, that is our two. But three goats is not very many. I just, I don't know if we can put any restrictions on the number of goats or the number of livestock and I'm not inclined to do that, but I also don't want to impinge on property that is currently zoned as R2 and with the expectation of R2 zoning.
Have you had any conversation with your neighbor in the north?
Yes, I have.
The neighbor's in, in the room today. We, we need, we need him to get on the microphone.
And go to that one if you want.
At the podium here?
Right here. Yes. Wrong name. Howard, middle initial E, Chapman, Jr. 1892 Wildcat Road is my residence. And, and you and the petitioner have had discussion about the use of the land?
Yes, when he was putting up the fence, I had informed him that he had to be zoned ag out there.
And what's your position?
Well, the property line is about 12 feet off the end of my house where my, two of my bedrooms are. And I'm looking at the future that's going to downgrade my property value. Maybe not by Matt, but if he sells it, who's to stop him from the next person putting horses, cows, hogs, or even a hog house right outside my bedroom? I have 197.62 feet is the depth of my property along his property line.
I assume then, by what, the way you're saying it, you're opposed to this?
Yes, I am. Yes. For the future and now, yes.
Was there any, any attempt to compromise between the two of you, you know, as far as location of the goats or?
Well, once Matt gets it zoned Ag 1, what's to stop him or the next person from, you know, that allows anything, correct? As far as a farm property goes?
That's correct. No, no different than across the road from you.
I'm sorry, what?
No different than across the road from you. That's Ag 1 all.
Aster, yes. He has two horses.
But as you indicate with Matt's property, it could be, it could be anything.
Right. And that was already my grandfather Dennis Ag across the road from me.
So how were these lots created? Do you, do you know the history?
I'm sorry, sir. I can't understand you.
Do you know how these lots were created? Was this a subdivision or how did they come about?
I was told that Lyle Hoyle owned quite a bit of that property, especially on the west side of Wildcat.
Because I'm sure it was all Ag 1 at one point.
At some time.
And it became R2.
Dee, what's the, or maybe Charlie, one of the two of you? What's the ability to put some, if we, if we go, were to go with the change in zoning, what's our ability to put restrictions on it? Or are we better at looking at a special use which would then terminate at the end of the current petitioner's ownership?
I could agree with something like that.
So if you're going to do a map amendment, you don't have as much liberty in, in order to put conditions on it. If you're going to do special use, you obviously do. Special use, you can have reasonable conditions that would go along with that and you'd also be able to have that expire because that's personal to the specific ownership.
And you, can you do a special use in R2?
I'd have to look back at the code, but I don't think so.
I don't either. That's what I was concerned with. Dee, where does the, where do we differentiate with putting up fencing or having land available for three dogs versus three goats?
Fence can go on the property line, up to the property line.
But I guess I'm more concerned with differentiating between the dogs and the goats.
Difference.
Now, there's another neighbor behind me that also has adjoining property.
I guess the concern, my, my question is, how do we differentiate between pets and livestock in this case?
Residential, you can't have farm animals, only domesticated animals.
Okay.
And 2.33 acres.
Yeah, that I, that I understand.
Does anybody else want to talk? Let's hear whatever. Anybody else in here have a comment on this?
You done with me or me or it's a dog or what?
John Beveridge, with an 1898 Wildcat Road. This is going to be a little bit repetitious, Mr. Chapman said, but with an Ag 1 classification, there's no limiting to the size or quantity of animals on that property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I have no qualms with Mr. Lindstrom and his goats personally, but I have 220 feet of frontage that busts up next to his property. And my question is potential land use. Now those know what's going to happen tomorrow and I know he has intentions of staying there and stuff and takes good care of the place, but if circumstances should arise that he was forced to sell it or he decided to move or something like that, once it's zoned Ag 1, it stays with the property, correct? So the next owner, which I realize, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but the next owner could do what he wants there. He could have livestock, hogs, whatever. And I'm looking at potential, not with him, but with another person adding livestock to it, devaluation of my property. I said, I think his intentions are honorable. I have no problem with the goats and stuff. If he keeps it at that, small animals, I have no objection to that. My biggest objection would be potential. I know you can't really control that, yet you still can. And a special use, I don't know if you can make that work, but that would be agreeable with me. And across the road, Mike, was the old Hoyle farm, which that whole area was farmland at one time. Then he started selling it off his lots on the west side. Yes.
Is that the corner where Wimkin used to be?
I think it is, yeah. Looks like it.
Looks like it there.
Deesh, you know what that, I don't know what.
I don't know if that's still Ag 1 or not.
It is still Ag 1.
Yeah, that's where Barry is the last name that lives there.
There's a little difference, Mike, in that the property appears to be substantially closer to the property line. There's less of a buffer, which is one of the reasons I was asking about the ability to put conditions on the R or the Ag 1.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the, Mr. Lindstrom.
Take into the microphone, please.
Yes, I'm fenced in.
I can't, I, we can't hear you on Zoom.
I don't have a problem with the goats or anything at the present time. It's the future that I'm talking about. If he would decide to sell it or someone else come in, but he has a goat set up quite a few feet from the property line as it is right now. So I'm just looking at it downgrading my property in the future. I mean, who's to stop next person coming in? Like I said before, cows, goats, chickens, buffalo, whatever you want. If there's a limit on restrictions, I might possibly go along with that.
Dee, could this be put into a special use?
If it's, if it's rezoned to Ag 1.
But if it's rezoned to Ag 1, then for what he wants, he doesn't need to get special use. We need to, I think the concern here is having a limitation on the usage based on the ownership. Once it was, if it was special use, once the current owner was gone, that would, that would drop off.
Oh, Dee's deep gave me here. She did a little homework from the U of I extension. And it's an article written August 30th, 2007. It says, "How much land is available and what is its productivity? Poor ground may support two to four goats per acre while better pasture may be able to support six to eight goats per acre." If you're adding goats to cattle, you can add one to two goats per head of cattle. Remember, it is better to have too few goats than too many goats. Too many will put a strain on your resources. And then Glenn's got another article there.
Another commentary from Natural Resources Conservation Service says that you may have heard of a rule of thumb is that it takes 1.5 to two acres to feed a cow calf pair for 12 months. That means that we should be able to, well, basically, one and a half to two acres would handle a cow calf pair. So at 2.33 acres, this probably wouldn't handle much more than a couple of cows or a cow and a calf on the property. The property would have limitations. The only, the only can, concern I would have on that is that that would assume that you're feeding the livestock off the land, whereas if you brought in your hay and, and feed, you could do substantially more in that space. So realistically, the property can't handle livestock off the land more than what's already being discussed. You're not going to get a herd of, of cows or large number of horses unless you're bringing in the food.
Horses would be about the same number as.
Yeah, yep.
So, so Dee or Charlie? Does he have to repetition for special use?
Yes.
Can't do both steps tonight?
No.
We need to table it and see if he can do that. If, if we're not willing to do this.
I would make a motion that we table this petition for this, for the evening and have petitioner Matthew Lindstrom have further discussion with the zoning administrator and possibly the state's attorney to see what viable options there are for special use.
So the property does need to be zoned Ag 1 for the special use?
Well, once it's zoned Ag 1, he doesn't, he doesn't need special use. Our concern with the special use is trying to find him, find an option for a balance that won't concern the neighbors, but will allow him to utilize that property with limited number of livestock, undomesticated animals as, while he's there.
Does, so he does a special use on an R2?
I, I don't, I don't know what the practicality of that is. I just, I'm just, we're just trying to find. I don't know what the practicality of that is. I just, I'm just, we're just trying to find out if there are some options, whether we need to discuss that in open meeting, or whether it works better to have him review that with you and Dee.
I'm happy to do that, but I don't think you can do a special use for an R2.
No, the question I had was can you do an Ag One rezoning and a special use simultaneous?
Do an Ag One and the special use would only run with him, and then when it's out, you'd still be able to do it because it's Ag One.
Because it's.
Yeah, so it's not.
No, you're true. That's right. So then it comes back to the, to the two neighbors that are objecting. We're trying to find a solution here. You're looking at all farmers here. So our obvious choice is it should be Ag One. You guys are objecting, so we don't, we don't, we don't want to upset you guys. So give us an answer. You know, that's where we're at. We can do this legally and make it hard, but it'd be better if you guys could give us an answer. You know, you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah. So he'd have to go through the whole process again to.
No, that, what we're talking about really won't solve it because he's still ultimately going to end up with Ag One if we tried that. You know, when he goes away, it's still Ag One. So then your concerns that you're talking about are still valid at that point, so.
What if we just withdraw our objection and he just stay at R2 with the three goats?
And you need to talk to Dee. And us.
And and that's why I asked that question about the difference, the difference between three dogs, who actually might be larger than those goats and having, having three goats, but it's the difference of domesticated and undomesticated animals, and the dogs fall into domesticated and the goats are un.
Well, in the interest of being a good neighbor and moving us along, I will withdraw my objection.
Same here.
And I'll put my faith in him that it is as he says.
Yeah, he just told me he wasn't going to have any cows or hogs or anything, just goats, but I'll withdraw.
What happens in the future, it happens in the future, I guess, so.
That's, that's great. That's the way the zoning board's supposed to work.
And I would say, gentlemen, based on, based on the, the size of the property, the probability of somebody having additional cattle or horses is probably fairly slim. But I absolutely understand your concern.
Right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Go through all these.
Hey, good.
Right?
Mr. Lindstrom, have you got any additional commentary?
Um, no, I don't. Anything more from the board?
Um, we need to go to the map amendment standards. First one, existing uses of nearby property.
So the proposed zoning is compatible with the zoning and land uses of the immediate area.
So although existing uses would be both Ag One and R2.
R2.
Right.
Any other comments about uses of the existing, of the existing nearby properties? Then.
No. Uh, can we have a motion on that? Existing uses?
So move.
In seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 On to the next.
The extent property values will be diminished by any zoning restrictions.
I would say adding an agricultural use to the current mix of residential and agricultural use would not impact the property values.
If the audience would bear with us because we're writing this down at the same time we're going through this, so please bear with us. Adding, go ahead and give me that again, Mike.
Adding an agricultural use to the current mixture of residential and agricultural use would not impact the property values.
Shall we say not impact current property values or current properties? I think the future is unknown.
That's fine.
Anything else under that subject?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna add in as a second item, that future use and value impact would be unknown. I add that as a separate. Okay. Anything else?
No. We have a motion on the extent of the property values. So move.
I got.
You have a motion in a second. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. I believe our position at this point would be that there would be no current destruction or current reduction of property values.
Yeah, that's a poorly worded question. These are, these are all standard questions. We have to go through with each one of these, so bear with us. They're just, they're tough. Because they're so general, they don't really, they're just hard to analyze. I don't know whether this county board ever uses, do they put any value on these? I assume that's what they're for.
Okay, so right now, under that, we've got no destruction or reduction of current value. Any other items relevant to that?
Well, the rezoning to Ag One will not affect the health, safety, or gender welfare of the.
Yeah, I, I concur.
Any other comments on those? If not, can we have a motion on that one?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner. I'm simply going to say not applicable.
It's a neutral subject at this point.
Yeah. You want to put neutral or not applicable?
Not applicable, it's fine.
I make a motion on that. That one's number D. A second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
The suitability of the subject property for the zone purpose. I would say consistent with adjacent properties.
There's a, yeah, that's fine. I was just going to add another one.
Go ahead.
I just want to say the open space provides sufficient room for agriculture, agricultural use.
Okay, so under suitability of subject property for zone purposes, we have consistent with some of the Jason properties, open space provides sufficient space for Ag use.
Okay, so move.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any comments? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Um, next item, length of time the property has been vacated as zoned, considering context of land development in the city of the subject property.
Not a.
I would concur. Any other? Okay, so we've got not applicable on length of time property has been vacated as zoned.
Uh, so move.
Second.
And how more comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The compatibility of the present and proposed classification with the comprehensive plan.
I would say, it was passed by the township and it was passed by the city. Who would have been the two governmental districts that had any comments on that?
Accepted as no objection.
Right.
By township and city of Dixon.
I'm just going to add.
Go ahead.
Given to the existing Ag zoning adjacent to the property and to the west of the property. The proposed Ag One is logical.
South, south, and west. And read those back to us. I will. I don't write that fast, though, nor do I write in shorthand. Okay, the compatibility of present proposed classification with comprehensive plan. Property accepted as no objection by the township and the city of Dixon. Given to the existing Ag One zoning to adjacent, uh, south and properties to the south and west, um, zoning request is reasonable.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other comment? During none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use, I would say not applicable.
Not applicable. Just limited impact.
No.
Same.
Or.
Not applicable, that's fine. Either way.
Okay, whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use.
Do you have better wording?
No. Okay. Uh, just leave it as not applicable, that's.
Neighborhood kids want to come look at the goats. So move. Make that motion.
I got.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this board recommend this petition to the full county board for approval.
I second.
Have a motion in a second to recommend it to the full county board. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Your petition has been passed by this board. We'll go to the full county board on what day, Dee?
On the agenda. I, I don't have that with me right now.
On the 18th. Okay, thank you.
Second petition of the evening. The manner of the petition of Stephen C. and Tracy A. Kitzman, 1201 Britton Avenue, Dixon, Illinois. Petition is for rezoning. The petitioner, Stephen Kitzman and Tracy Kitzman, status follows that the petitioners own approximately 6.25 acres. Uh, 6.25 acre tract legally described on the attached exhibit A, the property is identified by Permanent Real Estate Index Number 0702-29-376-003. Property is commonly known as 1201 North Britton Avenue, Dixon, Illinois. The property is presently zoned R2, single family residential district. The property adjacent to and directly south of the property identified by Permanent Real Estate Index Number 0702-29-376-004, also owned by the petitioner, is presently zoned as Ag One Rural Agricultural District. Other than the property directly south of the subject property, the property surrounding the subject property is under zoning jurisdiction of the city of Dixon. Petitioner desires to rezone the subject property to Ag One Rural Agricultural District. Petitioner desires to find the adjacent parcels owned by them, those being identified by the Permanent Real Estate Index Numbers 0702-29-376-003 and 004. Petitioner currently harvest approximately 50 apple trees, four varieties of grapes in additional. The petitioners bale grass hay for their cows, donkeys, and goats. Petitioner.
I say something?
Please come forward.
Rose, can I say something?
Yes, you can say something while they're coming forward.
On September 28th, 2001, petition 21P1578 was filed with the Lee County Zoning Office proposing an R2 residentially zoned parcel of 6.25 acres to be rezoned to an Ag One agricultural zone for the purpose of raising animals. Needing a permit to build an accessory building on the property, the zoning office made the petitioner aware that his property is zoned R2, single family residential, which does not allow the raising of animals in that type of zoning district. Wanting to keep the animals and be in compliance with the zoning regulations, the petitioners are requesting an Ag One agricultural zoning to allow the raising of farm animals and agricultural produce. Notification of petition was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners, posted on the property and displayed on the Lee County website. A legal notice for this petition was published in the Dixon newspaper on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty one. Required collection of certified mailing receipts have been submitted for the record. In addition to other notification requirements, the city of Dixon, whose boundaries are within one and one half mile of the property proposed. Was notified and on October eighteenth, the Dixon City Council voted without objection on the petition to rezone. The Lee County Comprehensive Plan indicates the land use in the area where the petitioner is requesting a map amendment is agricultural.
Clear. I see. You sound swear firm under penalty of perjury. Yes. Sign one of those.
Thank you. He's slappier.
Okay, Gary Gelbuck, attorney. On behalf of the petitioners and rather than me explain this, I'll let Steven Tracy Kitzman address this. The only comment I'd like to make is I, I believe there was an objection filed by the Dixon School District. However, it's more than a little ironic because property almost surrounding this property is owned by the school district and used for agricultural purposes. They could do anything that they want because it, it is used for agricultural purposes, but beyond that. I'll let Steven Tracy address any issues she may have, what they do with the property. I, I, you know, knew this as the, uh, Morris mansion. It's, it's a stately old. Home that they take great pride in as their residence. And they'll explain what they've actually done, which I think you'll find to be very beneficial.
Good evening. My wife and I purchased the property in, uh, twenty fifteen. The home was built in eighteen fifty four. It has always been a farm. It was a dairy farm for a hundred and seventy five years. And when we purchased the property. I really didn't think anything that it wasn't ag. We purchased the fourteen point zero three acres to the south. During that same year, which was ag. The west end of our property at twelve oh one, there's an irregular boundary line. To the left there, to the west. When we purchased the property, we asked that, uh, we asked that that boundary line be squared off so that it made more sense. We are currently using that property for the harvesting of our apples. We have fifty apple trees. We have three beehives. We also grow grapes. We planted five hundred grapevines to the south. And along with those. Uh, fruits, we also have a few animals. That my wife treats more like her kids than, than anything else. It is a no kill farm. It's more of a glorified petting zoo than anything. My wife loves her animals. Uh, she would, she would do nothing but, uh, have them stay there for the rest of their lives. Tom Motivan, the state of Illinois apiary inspector. Basically is a bee inspector stopped by our property one evening on a Friday night. Inspected our hives, noted them with the state of Illinois. And suggested that we were ag if we weren't already. That's part of the reason we're, we're here is to make sure that we're compliant with the state of Illinois, with the beehives and, and the state inspector. I, I wasn't notified. I did not know that this property wasn't ag until I went and got a billing permit from B. Where. It was brought to my attention at that point. So. Um, we have no intention of. Having a. Livestock farm, uh, a pig head, uh, anything other than small agricultural animals. Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Since we prepared some exhibits, like the handles out, it's a little more detailed than D has on the screen, so support if you don't mind.
But A.
The current animals that we have on the property are fenced in. The, uh, we have a few poultry animals that have a, a pen at night and then free range during the day. The objectors. Be of the, the Dixon School Board. Have a thou- a thousand thirty feet on the west side that is already ag. All we would be adding is the, the north boundary line. The University of Illinois defines a farm as anything over five acres. That produces a thousand dollars annually in crops. We sold over twelve hundred dollars worth of apples this year. And we have over the five acres of land, so. We certainly do qualify as the definition. But my wife is involved in animal rescue. Uh, she can tell you a little bit more about that.
This summer, um, I received a call. There was a Chicago, uh, bird coalition that asked if we would take in ten abandoned ducks. So they actually transferred them to me. They were like a day old. They were abandoned in a box. Um, they're all well and doing great on the property. Um, I work with a state wildlife rehabilitator that's local around here. Um, she's helped me save a duck and a turkey as well. Um, it's been a good lesson for our kids to learn growing up. They've learned how to, uh, harvest the apples. We all planted the five hundred plants on the grapevines. Um, and they helped take care of the animals and bale the hay as well, so we use the property.
He wasn't who takes care of the bees.
Uh, our.
They're here.
Our beekeepers are here, yes.
Yeah.
Of the Harveys.
Are there. Any neighbors or objectors here as well? I see an exhibit four. There is a neighbor who's sent a letter of support, so.
I think for everybody here, we probably ought to read the letter from the school board.
Okay.
So the Lee County zoning board of appeals, potentially definitely county zoning administrator. Oh, get close to microphone. Thank you. Uh, dearly county zoning board of appeals member. This letter is being submitted to raise formal concerns on behalf of Dixon Unit School District. One seventy regarding the petition number twenty one dash P dash fifteen seventy eight. This is. A petition by the property owners of a permanent real estate index numbers oh seven oh two oh twenty nine oh three seven six dash. Zero zero three, commonly known as twelve oh one Britain Avenue. Dixon, Illinois six one oh two one. For the property be rezoned from R two family, uh, single family residential district to an ag one rural agricultural district. Such a change would allow the property to be fully utilized for agricultural purposes, inclusive of animals and or livestock. The district is the owner of the property to the north and west of the subject property. Being held for future potential use and expansion of the district programs and activities. Concerns of the district for the official record in meeting minutes include rezoning of the subject property as ag one may create obstacles. Entering the development of the district owned property, having such agricultural uses immediately south and east of the district property may limit the development of the district's property. Uh, rezoning the subject property as ag one may limit development, expansion and property located. To the west of the subject property, limiting future residential growth and resulting property tax revenues. Rezoning of the property as ag one may create increased financial costs to the district when developing the district's. District owned property, including but not limited to local sound or entrances watershed. Environmental concerns and as yet unforeseen factors. While the district stance is not necessarily a complete objection. To the rezoning of the subject property, we have significant concerns over the impact, future use, development. And expansion of the district owned property bordering the subject property. Thanks for your time, Marjorie. Uh, superintendent. Any comments from? I need you to come up there and D. I don't have anymore.
While he's coming up, can I read the letter of support then to put into the record? October twenty third, twenty twenty one to the Lee County Board. My name is Elizabeth Sigler. My husband Larry Sigler and I have lived at twelve ten North Britain Avenue, Dixon, Illinois. We live directly across from Steve and Tracy Kitzman. Please consider zoning the Kitzman property twelve oh one North Britain Avenue fully ag. As a neighbor, I can tell you that they have a love for the land and the animals they care for. It is a pleasure to watch them nurture and care for the trees, vines and the bees. I believe they have a strong commitment to their dreams. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Elizabeth Sigler. Larry Sigler, both of them having signed this. Yes.
My, my name is Marvin Williams. I live on Apple Street. Close to, uh, Washington School, uh, Washington Avenue. Right across from. The park. Most of the people that have talked to me are, they have no problem with them putting their place there, but their, their main concern is. That the land that runs on Washington, on Britain. The part where the, all the trees are. It was concerned about animals being down in that area and across from Saint Anne's. Saint Anne's Church and the two, and the two churches on the, on Britain. And, uh, and they was wondering. They don't mind the animals in the back because they never gave anybody any trouble. But they, I'll even just collect it if this possible. To assure the residents that, uh, they won't have animals coming down. All the way down to where, but the apple tree, but no, not apple trees where the, the, the trees are. Because they was worried about getting out onto the street and getting hit and then. They have heard that they had ducks and some, one lady said they were worried about the ducks getting out because they. Supposedly are vicious, can be vicious, can attack. I don't know anything about that. Someone just told me that, so I don't know how accurate that is. But I told them I would come here tonight and I would express that their concerns and it wasn't too, that was the only concern. Was if the animals is gonna be coming down all the way, be able to come all the way down to Britain. And, and they didn't worry about the, the stench from the animals. I've been over there fifty three years. And I don't really want the smell of animals. I'm not a farmer. I never claimed to be and I never want to be because I couldn't live on a farm. With the animal stench. I, I have a place in Arizona and believe me. Sometimes they have cows close to the airport and that's three or four miles from my house. And when the wind is right, you can smell it. So that's pretty much. If we can just, if it's possible to get a guarantee. It also worried about if they sell that land. And somebody else, since they can go all the way down to Britain. They, they would, uh, end up whoever bought the place. Would be, uh, could do whatever they wanted with it, that, that part of the property. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Press, uh, Mr. Williams. May, may I address Mr. Williams' concern?
Yes.
Okay, I, I appreciate what, what Mr. Williams had to say. And I, and I just asked the board to take into consideration. The nature of the property, and this is, this is a gem. And this is an historical building and I can't imagine anybody that would. Own that property in the future with the stately mansion that's on there that would have livestock in the front yard. It just makes no sense. And the property wherever to be sold and developed, it's gonna be totally under the jurisdiction of the city of Dixon. The city has exclusive jurisdiction, as you know, within a mile and a half of the city limits for any subdivision. So I think, well, Mr. Williams had raised some concern, concerns. If you look at the nature of this property, it's just not, it's just not viable that this would ever be other than what Stephen Tracy. Thank you.
Any other questions? Board, board, the public.
So, Bruce, has, has the city or the township opinion on this, mind on this? City had no objection. Right. What did the township say? Dixon Township, right? Yes.
That, that's also with planning with the city. It, it just went to the city council.
Just for clarification for Mr. Williams and, and so that he has the ability to go back and. and talk to those who have, have discussed it with him. Right now, we're only talking about the six point, was it 6.23, 2.5 acres that surrounds the house. The other property that belongs to the Kitsmans right now, that property could directly to the south of it, 14.03 acres, is already ag and does border on Glen, or excuse me, North Britton. It's the part that actually is closer to the two churches, St. Anne's, and I believe that's Bethel Church. So if there were going to be livestock, it would be more probable that it's in the property that's already ag right now, and there's nothing that would be relevant to this issue on that property.
Yeah, we have-
There's more deer there than anything.
They like the apples.
Any other comments? We go to the finding of the fact.
Thank you. Existing uses of nearby property. To the northwest and the south, Ag One.
Three-sided dag, one-sided residence.
Across the road, across North Britton Residential.
Any other comments on that one? I make that motion. Second. Mike makes motion, Glenn, or Gene seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Extent of property values will diminish by any zoning restrictions. Considering on that side of the street, it's already agged.
I don't think there'll be any diminishment property values.
So.
Considering the minimal, minimal acreage of the property, adding Ag One will not cause any impact on property values.
Any other comments on that one? So I have this in here as none expected, considering minimal acreage involved. Now, probably ought to put that involved relative to adjacent properties. So read that one more time. The extent property values will be diminished by any zoning restrictions, none expected, considering minimal acreage involved in relation to adjacent properties.
So move. We have a motion.
Second.
Gene seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. I'd say that's not applicable.
I would agree.
The gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner. Well, I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't vote on it.
I'll make a motion on that, number C, not applicable. Gene seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner. Again, I believe this is not applicable.
Well, really, you could say that there'd be no, no gain to the public or to either side.
There's no hardship to the individual either, that's why.
Right. No, no gain to either side. Neutral.
Okay.
We have a motion on that. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Suitability of the subject property for zoned purposes.
It's suitable for Ag One zoning. So, it needs to be said.
Now, just say consistent with zone, or requested zoning.
Suitable to everything on that side of the road right there.
Okay. Consistent with requested zoning.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Length of time property has been vacated, is zoned, considered in context of land development in the vicinity of a subject property. Not applicable.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Compatibility of the present and proposed classification with the comprehensive plan.
I think the city of Dixon having no comment, went along with it.
Or no objection.
No objections.
Well, yeah. And on the comprehensive plan, that is considered agriculture, right? So it just is compatible with the comprehensive plan.
Read that.
City of Jick, Dixon has no objection, and item B, consistent with compre-, the comprehensive plan.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use.
Neighbors want to buy apples and grapes and look at them. Does it all have to do with supply chain?
I'm going to put it down as public may take advantage of products of the property.
Honey.
Produce of the product.
Everybody's garden in the neighborhood will be good because bees travel at least five to 10 miles from their hives. So everybody's garden will pollinate.
And just, public may take advantage of apples, grapes, and honey.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute. That motion carries. Okay, now you-
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this board recommended the full county board pass it to this petition.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a bunch of seconds. Is there any discussion? You have a motion to approve this petition and send it to the full county board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And now your petition will go before the full county board on the 18th.
The next petition is in the matter of petition number 21-P-1579. In the matter of the petition of Patrick and Joni Mulligan, 907 Illinois Route 2, Dixon, Illinois. The petitioner, Patrick and Joni Mulligan, status follows. The petitioner owns approximately 6.37 acre tract legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, and made a part here of property as the permanent real estate index number of 702-0702-34104006, and addressed as 907 Illinois Route 2 Dixon, Illinois 61021. Property is located along and immediately west of Illinois Route 2, approximately 450 feet east of Deer Road Dixon, and approximately 125 feet west of Hill Road in unincorporated Lee County, Illinois, and is within one and a half miles of the corporate limits of the city of Dixon and the township of Dixon. The property is presently zoned our two agr-, uh, single-family residential district, with the petitioner desiring Lee County Board amend the zoning ordinance to rezone the property to Ag One Agricultural District. Are the petitioners here?
So we're doing it proper order this time, instead of being business for nine years and then getting zoned. You educated us last time.
So, whoever's going to speak first, step to the microphone, state your name. Daniel Kappelneck, attorney for the petitioners. I'll have Pat kind of speak to what he's planning to do with the property. Essentially what we're going for here, and this is kind of a, we're, we're doing this in two parts here. We have the petition to rezone Ag One right now, followed up immediately by the petition for a special use. So essentially what we're looking to do here is Pat and Joni Mulligan have purchased this property with the intention of building a residence, but also continuing their business, which they run a, a, a small, small volume auto repair shop, Palmyra Pines. What they're going to end up doing is building towards the back end of the property and clearing about an acre of acre of trees there, where they're going to build their residence, and then a, a small garage where he's going to be doing work on about one to two cars a day. I'll let Pat kind of go through anything else, although the, the one concern that kind of was raised, and I don't know if it's really a zoning matter at this point, was the possible issue of access to the property and what's going on with Illinois Route 2, and how someone's going to get onto this. We have discussed the matter with Illinois Department of Transportation. They haven't raised any issues. I, I spoke with them earlier today. He went out to the property and observed it. There's already a turn lane, and if you'd like to see, I, I, I brought some better pictures that you can actually see from a street view. There is a turn lane already directed towards the property, and there is already a slab that's about 42 feet in length where the driveway would eventually be built. This has been cleared by the Department of Transportation. They're not going to be requiring any sort of traffic analysis for how this property is going to impact oncoming traffic. What they were concerned about was on Illinois Route 2, at this point right here, there's about a 45 mile an hour speed limit. With a 45 mile an hour speed limit for any entryway going into the property, there needs to be about 500 feet of sight line. We're lacking that a little bit on the west end. What Illinois Department of Transportation is going to require, and Pat's going to work with them on this, is clearing some trees out, which will open that up for the required 500 feet of sight line. So at this time, they're not really worried about it. We will have to petition through I dot whenever this is being built. I, I don't anticipate this is going to be built until spring at the, at the earliest. So that's when we'll go through the permitting stage for that, but I'll go ahead and let Pat kind of go through anything else for you guys now.
Good evening, guys. Um, same, same business, just me, one, one mechanic. You know, I have, we have three cars there today. I've only got to work on one. We're going to go back and work on it again tonight. So we don't do a large volume, but it, but it makes my living. So we're gonna, we, we sold our other property that we got all the zoning issues handled, and then we purchased this land with the intent of a pole building, and then some, a residential house there also. But it'll be small. We're only going to clear one acre of the six acres. We want to, we are our dogs, so we want to keep the, the trees as a, as a buffer zone for the noise and stuff from the highway, and nobody's going to see us. We're going to get up in the woods, and we're going to hide out and fix a couple of cars. There is a turn lane there, so it's, you know, and the driveway, so I don't have all that mess with the highway, really. Kind of looked into that first this time. They want me to cut some of the trees down. I have no problem, whatever they want to do, you know, to make it safe. Obviously, for us, we have a big motorhome, so when I pull out, I want to be able to see a length of distance before I pull out of that thing onto the highway, so. Any questions?
I assume when you've talked to the zoning administrator, this appears to be the most reasonable or most logical zoning to request for your purposes.
Yeah, we, um, our issue was having the residents there. So like you, she would said, you can't do commercial because you're not allowed the residents, but we're going to plan on living on that land. So she suggested that the agriculture with the restricted use for the small repair shop then.
In reference, I'm sorry, in referencing the, the county code, no other zoning classification other than in an Ag One Agricultural District, can the use of an automobile repair shop minor and a single-family residential dwelling be allowed?
Okay. Thank you.
So is the city find on that?
City voted with, without objection to the petition. City voted with, without objection to the petition. And in the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, the city of Dixon's future land use plan map generally depicts future business and manufacturing development on the east side of the city along East River Road and the Illinois Route two extending to the St. Palo Road. There's a few auto repair businesses, commercial, and industrial zoning along East River Road in the vicinity of the petitioner's property.
And, and just for the record, if I may, just because we didn't go over it when we first brought this petition before you, notice was published in the Dixon Telegraph for both of these petitions, and certified mailings were also sent out to adjacent landowners within the required fifteen to thirty day timeframe for doing so. I was out there today, so I did see that D posted notice along Route two, thank you, D. Just wanted that for the record.
Or do you have any questions? Any, anybody in the audience wanna make comment?
Hi. Very well. I guess so.
Better that way.
Hi, my name is Amy Ringler. And I've never been in a situation like this where I'm talking in front of a group, so if I'm a little nervous, please forgive me. So, we live on nine, nine twelve Deer Road. And the Mulligan's property is adjoining ours. And my concern is, are they for sure going to be able to get access from Route two? And if not, how is that gonna affect us? Because, uh, right about where the cursor was, yes, that's our driveway. And we live back up in there because, no offense, but we like not having neighbors. So, and I think I heard, and maybe I heard incorrectly, that you were planning on building the house back up away from Route two.
I need to hear you on the microphone, I'm sorry, it doesn't record.
And we've got two mics, so.
All right, we, we don't feel that you're gonna get, to be able to get near their home, because I think the topography, I think it's pretty hilly right into there by them. So I think about where that little white square is above the right, like, yeah, right there, I think that's about all we're gonna be able to get in. Because I think the rest back behind there is real hilly and not buildable. Yeah, am I, are we correct? It's so dense with the trees, we haven't been able to, to get up in there really to see what's in there, but. Go ahead, sir.
My question is, if you.
Wait a minute.
All right. Yeah, David Valley, lived out in that area, I'm a county board member from area, or regional three. Do you know, well again, do you have any easement to that driveway from your property at all?
I, I do not know, but I would say no, to us, that looked like a private drive.
As far as we know.
I, I think that's a private drive, and there's really, you, you get, you can't get in the property from up at there. We drove up there one day and turned around, and it looks like huge ravine and steep, and to me, there would be no way from their driveway or near their, that, that corner is not approachable. Our sole intention is to come in off Route two where they have a turn.
Unless, unless there's something in your plat or, or thing, there, to an easement to that road, you would not have, that would be private property.
Yeah, we have nothing on our paperwork, I believe. We have, we have nothing on our property deed or anything. Nope.
I, I haven't seen the Mulligan's plat or their deed to see whether or not they would have an easement over that, over that entryway right there. Just based on the overhead view, my, I, I don't think there would be one because there is direct access off of Illinois Route two. So there wouldn't be any sort of ease, easement by necessity or anything like that, because the property has direct access, so I, I would be very surprised.
The question that is just to, to answer there, do they have, you have no rights to that driveway at all, so.
And.
Without permission, it's a private driveway.
And, and, and we do appreciate their question and, and their concern, which is why we went to the Department of Transportation this week to see what they were going to require. Based on what the Department of Transportation told us, the accessway for the Mulligan's on this property would be on that, it, it sort of started right there on that slab coming off of Illinois Route two. They have indicated, and I got an email as I was walking into the hearing this evening, that's, that's where they would approve the access to the Mulligan's property, so long as they comply with the different permitting requirements needed that the Department of Transportation would require. And so that would just go along with whether or not that little slab needs to be fixed up a bit, it's already curbed. Definitely, they do need to cut down some trees, but the Department of Transportation has already indicated that their access would be off of Illinois Route two.
Yeah, real quick on that, yeah, that, that was the most unused turn lane, and, there, it's true. There's turn lane there, there's access was put there when the road was rebuilt, and I can see no other issues myself, thank you. That, that's, that's been many years, it ain't been used.
Dick and Amy.
So.
Dick, Dick and Amy, can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
Are, are you guys concerned with it being changed to Ag One?
Well, I wasn't, until earlier I heard like, the first Lindstrom guy, and they were talking about, well, what's gonna happen down the road? Well, they're gonna have a lot of property where they could, they could maybe have a lot of animals, and I wouldn't be interested in that.
I don't think they have any more property than you have. Yours is Ag One.
But I didn't ask for it.
I know, but.
You're not gonna see me raising animals.
And we don't have any animals.
Flame. There are always wild ones running around.
Yeah.
It only goes so far.
Yeah, we just cleaned up turkey poop this evening. So, I guess my concern is, we all know that dealing with the state of Illinois can be a problem, and do we know for sure that they're getting in off Route two?
Well, that, that's where the turn lane is located, and it's already been slabbed into curb.
Sure, sure, oh, we've been by there, don't worry.
That, that, the Department of Transportation has indicated to us that when they eventually go to build their driveway, that's where access is gonna come off of.
Okay.
There, there, there wouldn't be access really anywhere else for this parcel, unless they're going over private driveways, which would require a lot of agreements between the owners of those private drives.
Okay.
So, that, that, that's certainly something we contemplated when we got in touch with the Illinois Department of Transportation, it kind of went over those concerns that could possibly be out there.
Yeah, because I know that we're not interested in sharing our driveway, nor are the Bowers who are the house before you get to us.
And, and unless, unless you were to negotiate with the Mulligan's, and it wasn't in their deed or plat, I can't speak for whether or not that's the case, but unless you're to negotiate them and grant them an easement over that, they wouldn't be able to access it from that. Now, to your concern about farm animals, the overhead view.
And can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, I, it, it, it's from the overhead view, as you can see, the property is completely forced it over, there would have to be a whole lot of work done. That probably in the end wouldn't even be financially feasible to have enough animals on that property. I, I, it's very grown over, I was out there this afternoon. I, I think I would need more than a machete to get through it right now.
Uh, that's Danny Laterno. It's a little cabin.
Okay, D, would you go back to the zoning picture? I just wanna get a handle on. Okay. I guess to the Mulligan's, Patrick, would you clarify what the, when you talk about automobile repair minor? And I know that's gonna be relative to the special use, but it may be relevant to us proceeding also on the, on the zoning change. Could you clarify what you're referring to as automobile repair minor?
Um, we do a lot of maintenance, just oil changes, you know, check engine lights, brakes, tires. But again, I'm the only technician, I'm the only employee, you know, so there's not a lot of volume that we do. And we actually are kind of on the downhill slide, so last month, last year, we spent three months in Florida. We plan on it again this year. So, it's not, it's not like, uh, seven days a week or even five days a week, we didn't work Monday.
Would you, um, I'm gonna read a couple of definitions, and I want, would like you to tell me which one is the one that's appropriate for your business.
Okay.
Minor repairs, incidental body and fender work, touch-up painting and upholstery, replacement of parts and motor service to motor vehicles, but not including any operations specified under major automobile repair, which the definition is general repair, rebuilding, replacing or reconditioning of engine, motor vehicles or trailers, collision services including body, frame, and fender straightening, replacing or repairing, and overall painting or paint shop vehicle steaming.
No paint work, no body work, no, nothing like that. Nothing over a half-ton pickup truck, I don't do straight trucks, I don't do, don't try, you know, nothing diesel.
So are you pretty much just general replacement of parts and motor service?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and my back, I just had to buy one of those wheel lifts the other day, 'cause the tires are getting so big on the truck. My back will kill me at the end, I'm not. She's sitting right behind me, so I have to say I go in and work. So, it's my job.
The other questions from the audience and or from the board? Chairman. Okay.
Is it possible, or is it getting documented that I am very, very much against any possibility of any using our driveway? Does that go in the records?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, that's, that was my main purpose tonight. Like I said, we don't want anybody coming over the hill.
And, and that's also something you'd have to agree to, 'cause there's no, in this scenario, there isn't any, unless it's in their deed or their plat.
And I get that, I get, you know, maybe they'd find something that we don't know about.
There, there really isn't any basis for a prescriptive easement or an easement by necessity, it's just, their, their access route is Illinois Route two.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Amy. The, the ideal situation for a zoning meeting, in my opinion, is where you get to stand there under oath, the petitioner gets to stand there under oath, and you find out what the facts are. You know, so many times people come in here and they hear rumors about what the neighbor's gonna do. You just heard a fact, because they're under oath, so take that, feel comfortable with that.
All right.
And under oath, Amy, if we have any driveway issues, we're not gonna be your neighbors.
Well, if you're.
We're gonna be living in Florida.
Let's be honest, if there's gonna be driveway issues, and somebody can't get in off Route two, probably nobody else is gonna want it either.
Yeah.
So.
Six point something acres of trees in front of your front yard.
We like them, thank you.
Go through finding some fact.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, existing uses of nearby property. I would say mixed, a mix of R two, Ag, Ag One, and commercial or industrial.
If you go backwards up the road, there's other tire store, there's other repair shops.
Well, that's what I said, commercial and or industrial.
Right.
So we have mix of R two, Ag One, commercial, and industrial. Okay, anything else?
Mike?
So moved.
I got. Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Extend property values will diminish any zoning restrictions, or by any zoning restrictions.
Minimal impact.
I'm just gonna word it as none noted.
That's fine, whatever you want. Minimal impact.
Okay, I'll put it that way. Okay.
So moved. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety, and welfare, not applicable.
Not applicable.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Gain to the public versus hardships to the individual property owner? I, again, not applicable. And I'll even make that motion.
You're gonna make that motion?
Sure.
All right.
That was easy enough to write down.
That'll confuse the secretary now. In seconds it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Suitability of the subject property for zone purposes. Suitability of the subject property for zone purposes. Consistent with mixed nature?
Yep.
It also is in the comprehensive plan.
We want to put that up here or put it down?
Well, you can do it down, I guess.
Okay.
Well, the only thing is, city had no comment of the... City had no objection.
The city had no objection.
Um, we put that with this one or do we put it with the compatibility of present and proposed?
I could put that under that one.
Okay.
What do we have on this one?
Consistent with mixed nature of neighborhood or area.
So moved. We have a motion in a second. Any, any comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Length of time the property has been vacated is zoned, considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the subject property. Not applicable?
So moved. Is this the one with the comprehensive plan?
No, that's the next one.
Yeah, that's the next one, okay.
Length of time the property has been vacated is zoned, considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the subject property.
Can you move, sorry? So moved. Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Compatibility of the present and proposed classification with the comprehensive plan. It's already been noted. City had no objection.
And it is compatible with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Should say the county comprehensive.
Yeah.
The city actually wants that area developed.
Okay, so we have city had no objection and consistent with county comprehensive plan.
So moved. We have a motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for proposed use.
Minimal, minimal impact again. That just covered.
Yeah, my only word for it was unknown, but minimal impact works.
So moved. Second. You have a motion in a second. Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this board recommend to the full county board approve over this petition.
Have a motion to approve the petition. You hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this session. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. In the next petition. Matter of petition of Patrick and Joni Mulligan, petition number 21 dash P dash 1580. Petitioners Patrick and Joni Mulligan state as follows. Petitioner, uh, petitioners own the approximately 6.37 acre tract legally described as exhibit A, attached here to made part here of. This property has permanent real estate index of a number of 07 dash 02 dash 34 dash 104 dash 006 and addressed as 907 Illinois Route 2 Dixon, Illinois. The property is located along and immediately west of Illinois Route 2, approximately 450 feet east of Deer Road, uh, Dixon, and approximately 125 feet west of Hill Road in unincorporated Lee County, Illinois, and is within one and one-half miles of the corporate limits of the city of Dixon and township of Dixon. Petitioner desires a special use for the purpose of an automobile repair shop minor contingent upon the subject property being zoned, uh, rezoned Ag 1 agricultural district allowing a single-family floor. The petitioner has simultaneously filed a petition for the zoning amendment, asking the Lee County Board to amend its zoning ordinance to rezone the subject property from R2 single-family district to Ag 1 agricultural district. And the petition for special use is depend, is dependent upon the county first amending its zoning ordinance in accordance with such position petition. So, we have a, um, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District Natural Resource Information Report. Have a summary of that report. It says basement limit, limitations. The NRCS soil survey indicates about 2.2 acres or 27% of the parcel is composed of soil, which are very limited for basements. This can present problems for future property owners such as cracked foundations with basement fluid, um, structural integrity and high maintenance. Um, small commercial buildings indicates approximately 2.2 acres, pretty much the same rating. Commercial buildings, uh... Limited rating for small commercial buildings at 3.7 acres or 46% with a somewhat limitation. Has some risks for concrete and steel, 54, 54%. High rating for corrosion of steel, 46% moderate risk of concrete flood plain outside of the 100-year flood plenty. Uh, zero acres of wetlands. 100% of this parcel is composed of soils with a severe or very severe limited, limitation for septic systems. Prime farmland. It's 81% is of, of this is prime farm ground. However, it has a million trees on it.
Yes, prime farm soil, not farmland.
I understand. Settlement erosion control, 81% of their, of the survey indicates 81% of the parcel has a lower moderate potential for erosion. Has no record of states listed threatened endangered species. Do I have any questions about that?
No.
The LISA scored at 118, so it is a buildable lot.
What's that?
The LISA score scored at 118, just below the 225. Um, so it is a buildable lot.
Do you have any other comments? Dee?
Yes, I do. Notification of the proposed special use was also sent to the Lee County Health Department. In response to that notification, Senatorian Jennifer Cold sent an email on October 19th to the zoning office commenting on the proposed special use. And her comment is, they will be required to have a well and septic installed as currently city sewer and water is not available. She believes that there's been some issues with the automobile repair shop owned, operated by Mr. Mulligan a few years back on Palmyra. At the other property, he did not have the properly designed septic for operation of a repair shop, which would have gas and oil waste. They will have to have a septic which serves the house and a separate septic that would serve the auto shop, which would meet the Class V injection well requirements.
Mr. Bostrich. We need to have them sign in again since they signed in on the previous.
No.
Okay.
24-hour rule.
24-hour rule, okay, thank you. What's that?
Also known as slave rule.
Okay. I like the five-second rule. Once again, state your name.
Uh, Dan Kapelnak, attorney for the petitioner.
Patrick Mulligan, the petitioner.
Do you have any comments on this one?
Well, the only thing about the sewer though, we understand it's going to take two separate septic systems then on this new construction.
So, so the, you mentioned that you were going to build a house and this would be the garage that you were working on. Are they separate buildings, separate, separated by distance?
No, the, we're just going to do 1,200 square foot, one bedroom, one kitchen, one bath off the side, like in a T. It's a pole building construction for the shop, and then it'll just be one, you know, off the side of the building, but it's connected, so you can park inside the building and still walk into the living quarters.
Are you with needing to put two septic fields in? Are you aware of the natural resources concerns about 100% of this parcel is composed of soils with a severe or very severe limitation for septic systems?
We, we were thinking then we would do tanks and pump the tanks out instead of like a septic field.
Other option is...
Amount.
The amount.
And, and obviously Pat and Joni are going to have to work with, um, and, and an engineer, and they're going to have to work with what they have and make sure that what they build in is up to code. Um, they're going to have to get permits for everything, so when they do put stuff in, it's going to be up to whatever specifications the county requires.
That's something that we could just add into the special use that they have follow all the permits on.
Yeah.
Kind of traffic do you anticipate coming in and out?
Um, like I say, I, one to three cars a day, so I have more family and friends, you know, that visit us at our home than I have customers, so.
What kind of noise will it be?
There's no noise. My dog's in the shop with me and...
Speak up it into the...
I, I say there's no noise. My dog's in the shop with me and the air compressor's in a different room at our old shop that was, um, quieted down for noise with insulation.
So will you have any fencing for, uh, security or any?
Not planning on it at the moment. There'll be camera system.
Do you have set hours?
Nine to five, Monday through Friday, no weekends.
No employees?
Nope.
Exterior lighting?
I'm going to have a lot of that. I hate trying to drive around in the dark.
So that...
But it can be motion. I won't, I won't be bothering any neighbors with it or whatever. It'll turn off or be motion sensitive if you...
Do you have plans to handle the used oil and stuff that you're going to?
We do that on our own. We have a waste oil company that comes and picks it up.
Have a sign out on the road?
Um, I haven't decided yet. I mean, we would have to check with the, the local laws and things with D and that, what's allowed, what's not allowed, how far a highway, all that stuff.
Kind of intend to have...
Um, I, I had one at my previous place and then we took that sign down or whatever because it wasn't... Uh, but we're going to go by what, yeah, I would intend to have a sign. These people know where to turn in at or whatever, because I don't expect that they're going to be able to see the building or anything from the road.
The sign has to be approved by IDOT because it is on a...
Yeah, so...
And, and I, I, I did speak with IDOT throughout the week and I spoke with them again today. And what IDOT is going to do is when it comes down for their permitting for, um, the entryway into the property, I, I think his name was Josh with, with IDOT will actually be out there with Pat and Joni and kind of directing them on what needs to be done. Um, and they're going to kind of permit for everything, um, from entryway onto the property on that drive, driveway slab, all the way down to cutting trees down, any signage as needed. They're going to work with them to make sure that they're complying with whatever ordinances IDOT has.
I have no further questions.
So, so Bruce, one of the things I always like to do when we do a special use is narrow up the area that's on a special use. Heard me do this before. So 6.37 acre, I would like to just give you the special use and where you're going to have your shop at. And not open the whole thing up for auto repair.
And, and maybe Charlie can correct. I, I don't think we can spot zone this with a special use, can we?
Somebody came with a 40-acre tract, wanted a special use, we wouldn't give them the whole 40-acre tract. We would grade where they're going to put the... That's the same thing here. It's a 6.3 acre. I would like to, if he's going to build a house out here, sure don't name it a special.
The problem I see there is that we'd have to figure out some way of getting, we can't just say one acre or two acres. We almost have to be looking at a meets and bounds condition on, in that case.
And, and I'm not sure as to the county ordinances whether, um, you can actually, um, put a meets and bounds boundary on a special use. I think it has to be for the entire property. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You didn't want to talk over that?
You, you, you can limit us as to the use of the property and you can limit it us as to. This is only applicable while Pat and Joni own the property, but in terms of putting a box around it. I'm not sure that the board has the power to do so.
I, I, I think we do. We've done it many times. Whether it's legal or not, we've done it. With previous state's attorney. And I, I, I'm not, I'm just throwing this out for the board to consider. I'm not, it's not a drop dead thing on this property, but. He doesn't need six point three acres to have an auto repair shop. But I also don't think he wants to. I don't think he wants to spend that much time clearing that many trees either.
That was my thought.
And, and that's fine.
Just from our standpoint, he's, we only plan on clearing one acre. We only, the rest is stay in trees. Like I said, we want to keep the trees as a buffer to the highway. And the noise, our dogs. But we only plan on clearing one acre. Just to put the building up.
And I think if you have him. Exceeding where his shop is at and what he's doing with that shop and making it into, I mean, your example, six point three acres of a shop. I think he's going to be on that special use permit for the automobile minor anyway.
Okay. That's fine.
Should we go to finding effects?
Yes, sir.
Effective proposed use on the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, nobody will see it, so. It'll be hidden.
No material. No material change. I would concur.
I got another one here we could add to that.
All right.
The city of Dixon's future land use plan map. Generally depicts future business and manufacturing development on the east side of the city extending to St. Colerose. Or you can shorten that up if you want. Basically, the city of Dixon's future land use plan. Encourages this business, encourages this development.
Should I say encourages commercial development or?
Should say this type of development.
Encourages this. Okay. Okay.
Want to read that to us?
Yep. Effective proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood, no material change. And the city of Dixon's land use plan encourages this type of development.
So move. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Effective proposed use upon traffic conditions.
Based upon the. Petitioner's testimony, it was only talking about. Two or three cars, so it'll be a minimal effect on traffic. Probably ought to note that it's on a curve. But it also has a turn lane.
And I'm going to add requires state permitting.
Right.
Okay, so. I have effective proposed use upon traffic conditions, minimal, minimal effect on traffic. On curve, but with turn lane. Requires state permitting.
So. You have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Effective proposed use on public utilities. Nominal?
Minimal.
Okay. Anything else?
No. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Effective proposed use upon public health. Public safety and or general welfare.
That should not be detrimental to any public health, safety or general welfare, so.
Yep.
Read that one.
Well, I'm gonna.
We're going to make him wait until we finish this one.
Unless it's relevant to what we're doing right now. No, because we did. There was, that was the stuff for some of the stuff that was in the zoning change. Plan the base. Suitability. Again. Yeah.
Right.
So that's already in there.
Here's the stuff you did for the. Just to use values extended structure. Suitability. Time. Compatibility. So. Whether there's public need. So that's already, I guess.
Okay.
Great.
Effective proposed use upon public health, public safety and or general welfare. Not expected to be detrimental.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Effects of proposed use upon the surrounding property. Due, due to the mixed nature of. The surrounding zoning nominal.
Technically, since it's in the middle of a forest. It's got its own. Bruce, I said being in the middle of the forest. And having its own driveway, I don't know that it affects anybody. Around them. Minimal impact.
Okay. Okay.
So move. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Effects of the proposed use upon environmental concerns.
Needs to. You have the concern of the. The waste materials from the repair shop. And again, we probably need to say something about making sure that. Septics and those things are done through the health department.
Okay, right now I've got must addressed waste. Materials and comply with Illinois EPA regs. Must comply with health department relative to well and septic. Probably need to. Although there's. The Eco Cat indicated no. No endangered on the property. It does indicate. That the information for planning and consultation shows the following protected resources may be in the vicinity of the project. Petitioner will need to contact the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for further clarification. And listing of the resources for the site. So I, we should just indicate to comply with requirements of. Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Or. Or. Lee County, I don't know, yeah. Natural resources information. Yeah. Must comply with an Illinois. Or must comply with Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District in Illinois. DNR recommendations. Is that sufficient?
I'm made. So move.
Target.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So. We need to talk about if we want to put any conditions on especially if we have the ability to do that. I think the only thing that you're doing is putting a special use on it for. The. The light duty garage. Other than that, I don't know what else you can put on it for special use. Well, do you want to stipulate that he has to have an access from route two? How many cars do you want him, you know, does he have a maximum number of? Cars in the lot? You know, things like that. Then, then you have no problem if we put a number on there.
Hi. I, I'm also going to step in here and say this is the finding facts portion. If you wanted to give any more evidence, you should have done that beforehand. They need to make their findings. Based on the location, the setback. The testimony these provided in terms of usage. I personally don't see any need for additional. Additional conditions.
Other than it's for a. Of. Car repair shop of.
Minor, minor repair, which is already stated in the petition, so that, that would be redundant.
Right. You don't want to. Alleviate the neighbor's concern about access by saying it has to be up or out too.
Now, he's already testified in sworn testimony that if he can't access off route two, he's not going to develop the property. And as the attorney said, unless there's easement off of that. Other. Property. He can't do it anyways.
I'm throwing one other covenant that I'd like.
Okay.
But I'm, but you guys have already objected is I think you should just make this three acres. And then he gets to pick the three acres. And that's what he came, comes to auto. Especially use, but if you guys are objective to that, I, I can live with it, but I still think that's an option.
I'm, I would concur, looking, looking at the property, I would concur with the petitioner in that. If he's clearing an acre. I'm not sure that there's much financial feasibility to clearing more than that on that property.
Right. I would agree. I'll start erasing.
So read what you have. We already did the, we did, we've done all six. We're at the point of recommendation to the, to the full board.
Okay.
And since we were talking about conditions. That was, that was part of that animal. So. At this point, I would make. Recommendation, or we make the recommendation to the full board to approve.
A second?
Target.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To approve and send to the county board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We need to. The next meeting of the zoning board will be on the. And actually, we need to. Have a motion to recess until. The county board votes on the above petitions on November eighteenth. So do we have a motion to do that?
So move.
Um, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next regular scheduled meeting for the zoning board of deals will be six P M. On thirty December second, twenty twenty-one. With that.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, we, no, we already took the motion to recess. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I do really appreciate the board members who attended tonight.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Tom was here specifically to make sure that I didn't abuse his microphone and his desk.